Good evening, and welcome to this week's broadcast of the Grand Forks City Council Meeting. This meeting is brought to you in part by...
In competition, there are many variables to overcome. Your competitors, your confidence, the terrain, and the unexpected. April 13th, all of these factors will come into play in the Hugo's toughest monster truck tour championship weekend returns to Alaris Center with reigning tour champion. Who in last year's championship, Maryland defeated Quad Chaos, who is back and looking for redemption, and others looking to take them down. Who will prevail? Find out April 13th, the Hugo's toughest monster truck tour championship weekend, Alaris Center.
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.
How many things in your house connect to the internet? Let's see, computers, smartphones, gaming console, maybe your appliances and lights. They say that by the year 2020, the average home will have five devices for every one person. I don't know about you guys, but I don't want to be average. We're going to need much better internet.
Midco Extreme Gig is here, life changing.
Know what's in this box? Well, in case your crystal ball is broken, here's a hint. Safe, reliable energy for starters, but there's also a commitment to this community. See, at Excel Energy, this is our hometown. So we're not just about making a living here, we're about living here. Oh, I wish I had wings.
In our community, we're always delivering. Excel Energy, responsible by nature.
As a farm kid from North Dakota, I was raised to face challenges head-on. But that was put to the test when I was diagnosed with cancer as a teenager. Now, I'm determined to help kids overcome illnesses like I did. So I started my journey at the University of North Dakota. With hard work and determination, I'll help others like my doctors helped me. I'm making my impact, how will you make yours?
Good evening, this is the time and place for the Grand Forks City Job Development Authority. Begin with roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Docler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Sandy. Veen.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
We have a forum.
Very good, thank you. Item 2.1, updated growth fund policies and procedures, Ms. Richards.
Good evening. We'll start tonight's agenda with two kind of policy-related issues. The first one is the overall growth fund policies and procedures that's been updated. The last formal document was approved in 2008. And I do want to note that this afternoon, your packet was adjusted so that both the proposed and the existing 2008 versions are available now as part of the agenda packet. The update that we're asking for approval tonight is kind of an all-encompassing one. As I noted, it has been 10 years, so there were both kind of minor corrections that needed to be made, as well as just updating the document to reflect what we're actually doing. So as your staff report kind of walks you through, the big picture is that it has a different focus than the 2008 one, in that it provides a little more context for the two growth fund, or the two economic development funds within Grand Forks, Fund 2163 and 5996. Kind of talks about how the purpose of this document is to guide decisions made regarding Fund 5996. There's some updated verbiage about targeted industries and the assistance that's offered by the JDA. The old document uses terms like data processing, that's kind of old-school, whereas this document now refers explicitly to UAS and high-tech services. So that's, you know, an example of the type of changes that we made. We've also added programs since 2008, including the program that we're going to talk about next. So verbiage to incorporate those is included in the document. The second half of the document talks in great detail about loan procedures. So that has been updated so that it more or less functions as a desk manual now. So that for whatever staff is managing these loans, the document today reflects the processes and the loan software that we're using to manage the loans. And then last, just kind of routine corrections. Again, in 2008, there was a Finance and Development Committee that was referenced in the document that no longer exists, and the Office of Urban Development is now Community Development. So it's kind of a soup-to-nuts update. Certainly be happy to discuss any questions. We've been working on this since last fall, when we started talking about the need to update this document. So it's been to Growth Fund Committee numerous times, and it was a motion made at the March 4th meeting to approve the update that you see before you.
Very good, and I'll just reiterate what you've just said. The staff report, as I'm reading it, does not include that committee recommended action, but that is where we're currently at. The Growth Fund Committee has looked at this several times, had extensive discussions, including meetings with rural partners, et cetera. And the recommendation from the Growth Fund Committee is to approve the current proposed policy. Very good, thank you, Ms. Richards. Any comments, questions?
I'll move approval. Second.
Have a motion for Mr. Weigel, second for Mayor Brown. Yes, Ms. Mock.
With some of the updates, it seemed like one of the more significant updates is to consider requests that might be outside of city limits on kind of a more of an economic rural agenda. And there were some policies... So on the bottom of page four, that was kind of laid out, and it was stated that the Growth Fund would partner with rural communities in Grand Forks to also assist non-primary sector businesses on kind of a priority setting that might be more key to those local communities. How do we determine what is a priority business if we're kind of expanding that definition beyond the primary sector?
Well, this is kind of meant to reference that we've... The Growth Fund has been assisting rural communities for a very long time in the primary sector realm. With the program that we're going to discuss as the next item on the agenda, we're expanding that into non-primary sector in those rural communities. So that verbiage is kind of meant to allude to that. So there is a section on page seven, where we referenced the FlexPace program and the non-primary sector rural FlexPace option that is the next item on the agenda. This is meant to just kind of reference that so that the program description that is not part of this document has context. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but we've been, as I started to say, we've been in rural communities in the primary sector side for years. There's no change there. We are now, with this new policy that's coming next on the agenda, we're extending that rural presence to include non-primary sector, and that's really the only change in that part of the document, is to recognize that.
And so the idea behind that is anything non-primary sector, and that it would be considered on the merits of that application? Is that kind of the intent of this policy?
Right, the way, and I'm getting ahead of myself, but I'll give you a sneak preview of the next item. The way that non-primary sector piece works is the application is almost a co-application from the business and the rural community. So the Growth Fund would not consider an application for a non-primary sector request unless that community city council requests our involvement, basically.
And that is part of the policy that...
Correct.
Is that part of the application procedures then?
Yes.
Okay.
So that, the term priority business means that community, Thompson, Laramore, whatever that rural community, has to designate that proposal, that project, that business, a priority for that rural community before the Growth Fund would even consider participating.
And then just to follow up, for businesses in Grand Forks, is that also how we would consider non-primary sector?
The way we've structured this is if you're a non-primary sector business, with the exception of a daycare, which we have made an exception for that, you're not eligible unless you're outside the city limits or are extraterritorial zoning. The idea being that Grand Forks and the Grand Forks region is stronger if our rural communities are strong, and are places where people want to live. And for those communities to continue to be viable, it might be very important for the cafe, the convenience store to exist. Primary sector in rural communities is difficult, and we assist when we can, but there aren't a lot of opportunities. So that's kind of the impetus behind this policy change, was recognizing that our rural neighbors, if they thrive, we thrive. And how can we help them thrive? Well, this is one way to do that.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Marsh.
Yes, I am an advocate, of course, for the nonprofit business community as well, and know that nonprofits are able to bring in funding from other entities out of state, and from federal and state funds as well, that enhance our community, enhance job development within our community as well. Just wanted to ask, first of all, if the, any of the funds available are available or applicable to nonprofits as well. I didn't see any reference to it within the policy document, and wanted to introduce that, if it hasn't been thought of.
Well, we kind of... You're right, there is no place in this document that says we will or we will not fund nonprofits explicitly. We talked about assisting the university, but that's kind of a special case. Typically, the Growth Fund does assist businesses. With the daycare option, we were kind of silent on it, but the one daycare that we have assisted was a for-profit. So I guess the long answer to a short question is we have not prohibited it, nor have we encouraged it in this document.
Okay, well, that's good. I wanted to read into it that not even mentioning it doesn't prohibit it, and certainly nonprofits are our businesses, and they do bring economic development into our community. So thank you for that. The other thing I wanted to mention is that during the strategic planning meeting that we had a couple of months ago, we talked about the potential of, with the diminishment of CDBG funds over the years, the possibility of, as we look towards the 2020 budget, setting aside some funds similar to the beautification funds, the regrams, and the like, for a human service or nonprofit re-grant program as well. Is this where it would be likely to land?
Well, I was anticipating as part of our CDBG five-year planning process that we're going to be kicking off shortly, that would be the place to discuss where we would find funds that would supplement those diminishing CDBG dollars. I don't know, I guess that would be a topic for discussion, if the Growth Fund was an appropriate source to supplement those, as opposed to any other source. Those discussions haven't been had with stakeholders or with you, the policymakers, yet. But that is, I guess, on my to-do list in terms of looking at the CDBG program, is that operational funding that has been shrinking from CDBG, and boy, pre-97, I guess there was a, I believe it was called a human needs fund. I think that was general fund dollars at that point. But that's a topic for future discussions that need to be had, but have not been had yet.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Marshall, if I may, thanks for those questions. I'm very sympathetic to where I think this is headed. However, this policy proposal tonight is about 5996, the Growth Fund, which is largely directed by state programs, specifically the PACE and FlexPace programs. And they have certain guidelines that we need to adhere to. I think that what you're suggesting would perhaps be more consistent with 2163, which is the larger economic development fund that feeds into 5996. So I'd very much like to have that conversation, but for this proposal, we're focused on 5996, which has these guidelines that probably make it not the best place for nonprofit. Although, as you've noted, it's not prohibited here, but I think that that's probably a 2163 discussion. Ms. Richards, your thoughts?
Well, I agree. The way we've kind of structured this new document that we're asking for adoption is it kind of talks about 2163 is economic development that has city council purview, and you decide how those dollars should be spent and where they should flow to, and that's kind of the operative word, those dollars flow through. In 5996, typically, they revolve, so it's loan programs. So while 5996, or that fund, that Growth Fund activity, is not always a loan or a revolving mechanism, that's the majority, or that's kind of the goal, I guess. So if it's a one-time, well, the policy document kind of walks you through it, 2163 typically allocates funds to, and there's a list and a flow chart. Those dollars go to that entity or that program, and they're spent. On the 5996 side, the money is allocated to loan programs, or properties in the industrial park that we rent, so that there is revenue generated, so that, well, we would welcome an influx of funds from 2163. It's not necessary every year for that money to come in, because 5996 is a self-perpetuating fund to a certain extent. So I think Mr. Weber's assessment is correct. If the council wants to consider economic development funds for human needs or human services, that would be under the guise of city council acting on 2163, as opposed to the JDA acting on Fund 5996.
However, if a nonprofit were to come forward and want to expand capital improvement project, and looking for a loan interest buydown, this would not prohibit that kind of application.
Job creation is what the Jobs Development Authority is all about, so yes, it would not...
Right, and that's exactly what I had in mind, was those business kind of development opportunities that might be initiated by a nonprofit as well, so...
But the Human Service Fund...
There's nothing to prohibit it.
Right, but the Human Service Fund that you were discussing pre-1997, I think would be more 2163 discussion.
I agree.
Excellent, thanks. Thanks for bringing those ideas forward, yeah. Any further comments, discussion? Mr. Swanson.
Mayor, just a couple of questions. And I don't think our office has reviewed this, that I'm aware of. There's a section on late fees. Has that been reviewed to note whether it complies with state law on usury?
No.
There's also a section here that refers to collection, and there's a reference that the city attorney must certify that all collection efforts have been exhausted. I might suggest that there may be other alternatives before exhaustion that would come into play. In fact, we may look at it because of a bankruptcy, and say, it's not reasonable to try to collect because of a bankruptcy. That appears on page seven, under your servicing.
Well, I would certainly defer to your reading of the verbiage in a lawyerly fashion. I think the intent was that clearly the Growth Fund will not be writing off loans if there is a likelihood of recouping. If your office advises that there is no likelihood, that would be...
And we've done that in the past, particularly in bankruptcy proceedings, but as I read the language here, it actually required us to indicate that we had exhausted our efforts. And that connotates that we've actually made efforts to collect. So I think we might be able to give you some better language as to when that certification could occur, such that the write-off could occur.
I would certainly be obviously open to any...
And the other thing, I was a little bit confused, again, just a speed reading this. I don't find any language in these policies or procedures that would limit the application to one fund or the other. And so I was confused by your comments. Are these intended to apply to both funds, or only to one?
No, this document is meant to guide the Growth Fund Committee and the JDA, not city council.
But in the overview, you discussed both funding mechanisms.
Correct, for context, that in Grand Forks, economic development is kind of referred to broadly. And economic development funds come into the city in Fund 2163, which council has authority over. Fund 5996 is what the fund that this document is meant to address.
Would it be appropriate to state that, that these policies and procedures apply to funding under that fund, as opposed to the other?
All right, if you feel that that's...
Well, I was just confused, because I read the overview, and then I heard the discussion you had with Mr. Weber, and it wasn't clear to me what the intent of these policies or procedures were.
Just a question. My reading on page one, the specific reference to the Growth Fund portfolio and Fund 5996 indicates for me that these policies are specific to 5996.
It does actually explicitly state that on page two, right under the flow chart.
This document is meant to set forth strategies and principles to guide 5996.
Sorry, I hadn't seen that, I was reading above that.
And then as far as the...
So the intent is that these only apply to that fund?
Yes, it says there, yes.
All right, thank you.
And as far as the legal concerns, this is an update, an attempt to update existing policies. And did the previous policies refer to collection efforts?
Not to the extent that they are here. The language here is different.
It is.
And the policies are different, particularly as it relates to collection of late fees.
So would it be possible to remove those references for now, so that the rest of the document could be approved, and to review those for a future revision?
Well, perhaps the recommendation should be approved, subject to review by the city attorney's office.
Yes, more eloquent, nice. And...
I would amend my motion to state that.
Very good. And we have, that's consistent with the second. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing done, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Ms. Richards, item number 2.3, FlexPace Loan Request. I'm sorry, 2.2.
2.2.
Non-primary sector rural FlexPace program. So this was the other shoe dropping.
Right. I'm gonna, before I kind of get into the more nuts and bolts and implementation pieces of this, I would like to have Brandon Baumbock from the EDC come and kind of talk about a little bit of the background and the impetus for even bringing this before you. So I'm going to turn it over to Brandon.
Mr. Baumbock.
Thank you, Meredith, thank you, members of the JDA. Brandon Baumbock, Business Development Manager with the Grand Forks Region EDC, and this is a topic I'm particularly excited to talk about, so I appreciate the opportunity to do this. Since joining the EDC just a few years ago, well, a big part of that was coming to work across and fulfill our mission of across Grand Forks County, and so I have a real passion for this stuff. And as you know, and Meredith has pointed out, that the Grand Forks Growth Fund has been active throughout the county for some time, and partnered with a lot of the communities out there on primary sector opportunities. Now, in the past three years, of course, it's, it was clear to me that there are more opportunities that fall outside of the primary sector definition. And so came a conversation, not that long ago, throughout these, last year, in middle, last fall, a conversation around amending these policies to be inclusive of broader project types that will allow for growth and further support of the regional growth and strengthen our entire economy. So there's been a lot of work and consideration put in, as you could tell through the last conversation, and over these past few months, put into the mechanics of it. Those are included in your staff report. Lot of deliberation on that, I'm happy to answer questions, as I'm sure Meredith and others are, but I really just appreciate the opportunity to work on this. And I'd like to thank the leadership of Mayor Brown, and Council President Sandy, and Growth Fund Chair Weber, of course, for even bringing this conversation up, and a few others, the staff at the Growth Fund, the Grand Forks Region, Red River Regional Council, I like to say my own organization name, I guess. Don Keighley has been a big part of this conversation, too. And so it's been a whole lot of fun getting to go around to a lot of communities throughout the county, and have the conversations about what is a priority to Laramore, to Emerito, or to Northwood. So I think what we have in front of us is an opportunity to participate and support our regional economy. And outside of questions, and going through some of the policy specifics, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Baumbock? Very good, then Ms. Richards will feel proceed with the 2.2.
Well, your staff report does kind of walk through what we considered the key elements of implementing any program like this, and what should be addressed prior to action. And I guess the most obvious was, can the JDA afford to do this, and there's ample funding to do that, so that was pretty easy. In terms of rolling out the program, there were concerns about making sure that the Growth Fund's role was understood. As I mentioned earlier, we are not trying to control development in rural communities at all. This is very much empowering those rural communities to say, we want to have a larger voice in economic development in our community, and how can they partner with the Growth Fund when they think it's appropriate? So the procedures that have been outlined address those implementation issues of what is the role of the rural community, should that rural community have funding involved, as you define that rural community, what does that mean? And if it's a project that falls outside of the boundaries of a rural community's city limits, how do we act? So it's very much, the nuts and bolts of implementing this program have been pretty thoroughly reviewed. I can certainly walk through them if you'd like, but the upshot is, we have test-driven this pretty thoroughly over the last few months, and certainly happy to answer any questions. I know that there's some concerns about competitive impact. In terms of the competitive impact issue, the policy, as it's written, really relies on the rural community to make that decision. If Proposal A would compete with another existing business in that community, that rural community, their city council would have to decide, do we want to support Proposal A if that might have a negative impact on Business B? If they don't want to, we never see that application. In terms of the effect of a proposal in rural communities, its impact on a Grand Forks business, well, that's the purview of you, the JDA, to make that call. And if you feel that it would be a negative impact, you certainly would then be within your rights to not support funding for that proposal.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Richards. Ms. Mant, I remember, it was about six years ago, I first met you at a Red River Regional Council meeting in Laramore. And we discussed at that time that Grand Forks does better when the whole region does better. And so building these partnerships with our rural communities is important for our economic development. And then, more recently, we've engaged a discussion about the needs of these communities being different than that of Grand Forks. Economic development looks different in our rural communities than it does here in the city. So that was part of the consideration, driving these policy revisions, and looking forward to moving forward with it. Any further questions or comments from the JDA this evening? Ms. Mock.
So in terms, both of the new policy and then an application like this, really, when we receive these applications and look through... we receive these applications and look through, one of the things we're looking for is support from the mayor and the council of that respective community, both to help identify what is a priority to them. And then, you know, like in this case, there is a competitive advantage that is, or a competitor in the area.
Correct.
We're looking to them for some guidance on, yes, this is still a priority if we decide to fund that we're not, in some way, in their perspective, picking winners and losers in another community. Because I guess that would be a concern that, you know, competition isn't a bad thing, but I don't know that this is the board that necessarily should decide between two competitors.
Well, and that was a concern, that we didn't want the Growth Fund to be seen in that role of picking winners and losers. So that's a big reason that it is set up so that, as I said earlier, it's really almost, we have co-applicants. We have the business requesting the assistance, and then we have the affected community that's also requesting the assistance on behalf of their community for that business. So without both of those partners, and then, of course, it also has to meet, you know, Flex-Paced Program requirements. So typically, these applications originate with the EDC. That wouldn't change. It's just that the EDC would also make sure that the affected community is brought into the process right from the get-go.
And that's maybe something that gets a little bit glossed over. The EDC does do that financial vetting before the application is brought forward to ensure that-
Indeed. Not only does the EDC do this, but we have the advantage of the primary lender doing that and the Bank of North Dakota. And then this process allows us to leverage Bank of North Dakota dollars brought into our state. So we get that kind of due diligence done a couple times before it comes to us.
Right. Typically, and presumably, if this is enacted for future applications, it will first go to the EDC Board and get their recommendation. That would be preceded by work with EDC and Bank of North Dakota and local lending staff to package a deal that is compliant with the regulations before it would even come to staff's office, let alone hit the agenda for Growth Fund Committee or the JDA.
And I think we, I think, Mr. Baumback, you mentioned that you met with different communities and the priorities may change from community to community. So they'll be helping set what is a priority.
One other thing that's changed over the last six years, recently, we asked consumers from throughout the region to help pay for our water treatment and our roads in the way of sales tax. These sales tax dollars are what build these two funds, 2163 and 5996. So our rural neighbors are coming into Grand Forks as a regional center and helping pay for these things. We are, in turn, giving back through this economic collaboration. With that said, any further questions or comments, otherwise looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Weigel, second by Mayor Brown. Very good. Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now we have item 2.3, Flex-Paced Loan Request from Eastdale LLC on behalf of Northdale Oil, Inc. Ms. Richards.
Well, right. With the action that you just took, we can now act on this request from Northdale Oil for a non-primary Sector Rural Flex-Paced Loan. We've discussed this for quite some time, going back to January. I think while there was support, as we just saw, for the program, there was a feeling that we shouldn't get ahead of ourselves and approve a loan until our policies actually had caught up with where we were. So that's what's been going on since January, I believe, when we first received the application from Northdale. We do have Northdale, Mr. Rec is in the audience here, who is the President of Northdale Oil. As I mentioned in the previous item, typically, these items come through the EDC and Brandon presents. In this case, we haven't followed that model, but with the action you just took, this application now conforms to Growth Fund policies. And so the action from Growth Fund Committee just an hour or so ago was to recommend approval of this request. Kind of walk through, again, this is a Flex-Paced Loan. It would provide interest buydown on their commercial loan for the permanent financing on this gas station and convenience store in Thompson. So clearly, it is not, it is a non-primary sector request. The City of Thompson, at their March 4 meeting, authorized a $5,000 match or their contribution to the, what is our, $66,667,000. That's the required match that Bank of North Dakota needs from the community. $5,000 of that would come from the City of Thompson. Again, this is a loan, so at the end of, in this case, it's, I believe, a 45-month deferral period. That would be repaid both to the Growth Fund and the City of Thompson.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Richards. Comments or discussions on this item? Have a motion from Ms. Marshall, second from Ms. Dokler. Any further comments? Mr. Vien?
There's probably a couple things on my mind here. This is the first time it hasn't gone through the EDC Board for a recommendation, right?
Correct. That is our typical process, is that the EDC weighs in before it comes to this group.
Is there an avenue for us to have that happen?
Well, my understanding, and I can't speak to this directly, is that there is some time sensitivity for the loan to close. If that were to be referred back through the EDC Board, I guess I can't really speak to Mr. Rec.
Time sensitive.
So I guess if your motion were to refer it back to the EDC Board, when would that be?
It would be before it would move back here. It would be before it's proposed.
So what would that do to your-
I'm sorry, I do not understand the question.
If we were to ask the EDC Board to take a stance on whether this should be approved or not, that would postpone action by this Board until April 15.
Oh, yeah. It's, that's, if we can do it sooner than it creates-
Sorry, sir, if you could step forward.
Yeah, we started this-
If you'd step forward to the microphone, sorry.
We started this almost a year-
No, I'm sorry, I need you to come forward and state your name. We've got the cameras rolling and it's Mike.
We started this almost a year ago in approval.
Could you give us your name?
I'm Scott Rec with Northdale Oil.
Very good. Thank you.
We own it, and we have communities, small communities, who do a lot of business in rural areas. We started this application a long time ago, and it just kind of got put off and tabled and whatnot. So I guess that's where we started with that.
So this is needed for the final financing?
Yes.
And that, you've already asked for an extension on that, is my understanding?
Yes.
So that does create a dilemma, especially for the applicant here to take advantage of this opportunity that we would see. As a non, this is our first non-primary sector business to be funded from out of the city limits, we'll say, to do that kind of work. I had a couple of concerns. One of them is that, is there a competitive impact to the City of Grand Forks because of your proximity to Grand Forks and the closeness of that? And the other thing is, this is a retroactive to a business that's already constructed and operating. And you must be doing your final loan applications to do that. But this is a first for us because we actually have a business that's up and operating. And then I was worried about the competitive impact. That's why I was thinking it would be great to have the EDC give us a recommendation, because we are out there a little bit trying to do this. And I don't want to hold you up. It's kind of a dilemma. I think, you know, I think it's a great business you have. We're not trying to say anything negative of that. But as I look at what the City of Grand Forks also taxpayers are paying for, and I want to make sure that we have, you know, done a due diligence on it, I guess, and that was my question here. I'm not trying to, or wanting to stop and hold you up, but there is a little bit of a problem at this late hour, I guess, not having done all the things that I had hoped we would have been able to accomplish. And again, I want to make sure that our taxpayers and businesses in town are also aware, and I think we had some conversation, this is, should have been in the paper, and people should have heard about it, I would hope, but I haven't heard back from anybody that would see that this might be competitive.
Well, in terms of public notice, yes, there have been articles in the Herald, and there was a public hearing notice published in the Herald, as we always do, for applications of this kind. I have not heard anything from competitors, you know, raising a concern about that aspect of it, but that doesn't mean that there is not concern in the community.
Mr. Lund, can you speak to the EDC's role in this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The EDC, as your policies just were advised and revised, and I'm not sure if the language exists in the early document, the EDC Board advises the Growth Fund Committee on projects and have historically now been primary sector in nature. So we would then fulfill that role, and now with the new policy with respect to rural projects, and Brandon Baumback being, you know, our resource that is present in those communities and a development partner with them. We hadn't been a part of this discussion, the policies didn't exist for the Growth Fund to support this, so therefore, it was not really in our work plan, for lack of a better word. I think I could come up with a better one, but maybe not right now. So that's the reason why we really hadn't had that discussion at the EDC level up to now, because the policy didn't exist. It had been a discussion, the things that you're hearing from the company, and likely, if Don were here, in terms of it being a discussion for many, many months, we've been a part of those as well. And so that is very true, that, and I am aware that requests have been made, it's in construction financing now, well beyond when it's been operational. And typically, a project like this would have been put into permanent financing quite some time ago, but holding out on to see if the support could be made available, that needs to be provided. You can't refinance with pace resources from the Bank of North Dakota. That's why it's in, that's why I presume it's in construction financing at this stage. If that answers your question, Mr. Chairman.
And we still do have the due diligence of the primary lender and the Bank of North Dakota having approved.
From a project banking standpoint, financial standpoint, I think the due diligence is done quite well. The loan to value, I recall, is about 70% personally guaranteed by the business owner. So that's very consistent with the types of projects and the collateral that you've had supporting loans in the past.
Very good. Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Vien? Any other comments or discussion?
Thank you.
In that case, I'd be looking for a motion?
I think we already have one.
We already have one. Very good. So no further comments or discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Very good. Thanks. And now, item 2.4, Flex-Paced Loan Request for Countrywide Sanitation Company. Ms. Richards.
Well, now we're going to go back to our more routine process, and I'm going to let Brandon introduce this item that has been reviewed by the EDC Board.
Yes. Thank you, Meredith. Members of the JDA, I'm here to present the application from Countrywide Sanitation for a company expansion. Countrywide Sanitation is a Grand Forks-based company that provides regional refuge services within 120-mile radius of Grand Forks, but then bales that material, recycles it, and sends it to outside markets, primarily the Minneapolis market. So that meets the Growth Fund primary sector requirement. The project is for Countrywide to get two more new garbage collection trucks to recycle and export those materials. Project costs of $330,000. That's $30,000 equity from the company and a $300,000 loan from bank forward. The application requests a loan from the JDA of the amount of $14,051, leveraging $26,095 from the Bank of North Dakota to buy the interest rate down to 1% over five years. The loan to value on this is 95.17 of the package here, and it's secured by UCC filing and a personal guarantee from Rachel Gennovich, who is with us here today in the audience in case there are any questions on behalf of the application. Otherwise, we'd be seeking approval of this application. As Meredith mentioned, it has been in front of the EDC Board and approved to be then seen or recommended to be considered by the Growth Fund Committee, which just downstairs had considered that at 4 o'clock.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Baumback. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, looking for a motion? I have a motion from Ms. Marshall, second from Mr. Vien. Any further questions or comments? Ms. Mock.
One question that I kind of had is, it seems like there were quite a few loans that we've had go to Countrywide in the last few years. I mean, I guess in the policies that we just updated, I didn't really see anything as far as limiting loans. Is there any concern to having four loans out to the same business?
Well, you're right. Our policy is silent, and the question was asked downstairs, how many is too many? And we can certainly look at that as a policy if you feel it is necessary. In terms of the intent of the program, I don't think that the number of loans necessarily means it's more risky. This applicant has had two loans that were already repaid. There are two loans that are active but deferred. And then the one before you tonight would make the fourth active loan, as well as one that was approved but has not yet been dispersed. The program is, through Bank of North Dakota, somewhat limiting in that, you know, there is funding available on a biennial basis, and one applicant cannot take too much, but it's based more on the quantity of funds, not the quantity of applications. So I guess, in my mind, the idea that, as your staff report kind of walks through, the fact that Countrywide has been a good customer, that should be seen as a positive, not a negative, in that they're risky because they have a lot of loans. No, it's more that they're a growing company, and that's what the Growth Fund is meant to do, is to support that growth.
In fact, Countrywide has previously paid off completely two, their first two loans.
Correct.
And the existing loans, everything is in good standing.
Right. The existing loans that are active but deferred total about $105,000. The one tonight would add $14,000 onto that.
But that's because the, they're not to be paid back yet. That's the deferred.
Correct.
So it's not as if-
Right. They're not past due or in any way, anything other than active and in good standing. They're just still in that initial deferral period.
Is that, as more of a general policy question, is that something that the Growth Fund is going to discuss? How many is too many, or how's to determine-
Well, now that it's been raised, I think we will. There's not been, staff has not been directed to pursue that, but given the conversation tonight, I think we will.
With the policy review from the City Attorney's Office, we could consider those issues altogether, I imagine.
Right. I think at the very least, it will come back with, here's the final version, as has been, you know, amended, if that's done by the City Attorney's Office, and we could certainly address it at that time.
On the other hand, from my perspective, we have a fantastic homegrown story here, and the ability to take part and share in that success and to continue to leverage Bank of North Dakota dollars in support of that business. I wouldn't, personally, at this point, I don't see any reason to limit that kind of growth potential. As was discussed downstairs, a bank looking at loans, looks at the debt-to-asset ratio, personal guarantees, those sorts of things, and then they wouldn't have any limit on the number of loans that someone could be approved for. It's, as you mentioned, it's about quality rather than the quantity of loans. But we can take that up when we get the opinion from the City Attorney.
Absolutely.
Any further questions, comments? Have a motion for Mr. Weigel? Second from Ms. Dokler?
We had a Marshall and Vien.
We already were there. All right. I miss these motions each time. Very good. No further questions or comments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. Item 2.5, Purchase Offer for 201 South Fourth Street from Center, Inc. Ms. Richards.
This property has been in the JDA's portfolio since, well, after the flood. It was acquired from the county for a dollar, and the- It was acquired from the county for a dollar, and the money that was used to fit it up for Center's operations as an alternative, non-residential alternative treatment facility, I'm probably not getting that quite right. In any case, grant funds fit the building up for use by Center, a nonprofit that provides outpatient treatment. The terms were very, very attractive and below market, basically, the grants that fit up the building required Center to have a fifteen-year opportunity to operate out of that building, and initially, they paid basically no rent. They paid the expenses, but it was a rent-free proposition in terms of, you know, the JDA receiving any funds. When the first floor was fit up using CDBG funds, then a minimal amount of rent was included in their lease, but still, it's very much below market. However, the fifteen-year commitment was met in 2017, and so, at that point, it's the desire of both Center and the JDA to come to some sort of more market-based, but feasible long-term solution, they want to remain in the building. Social Detox also occupies a small portion of this building, and so, in order to ensure that the social detox operation, which also received substantial investment to fit up that space, to secure their security in that space, it was agreed that perhaps selling the building as a condo would be best, where Center would purchase the facility with the exception of the social detox space.
Social Detox is operated by the City County Health Department.
Correct.
Very good.
And they have been in the building officially since 2016, I believe. A great success story to get that facility up and running. In any case, over the past year, we have worked with Center to come up with a mechanism to allow them to continue to operate without the JDA basically operating with no income from the property. An appraisal was done, that took quite a while, but the upshot of that was the building appraised in a hypothetical condition, as if it were vacant, for a million dollars. Center's offer, after some negotiation, was to purchase their space for $750,000 and then leave the balance of the building in the JDA's ownership for social detox.
Well, their initial offer was much lower than this, this was a process of negotiation.
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Correct. I should also add that the million-dollar appraised value was not based on the condo arrangement, but this hypothetical condition that the building were vacant. This was discussed at the Growth Fund Committee, and their request was, well, since there is a significant gap between the appraised value and the offer, could the city assessor look at it? Mr. Hudek did, and his memo is attached to your staff report that kind of outlines the differences between the appraisal at a million dollars and the actual circumstances that surround Center's offer for $750,000 for their space. Long story short, he found their offer to be fair and reasonable, and the recommendation from the Growth Fund Committee was to approve and authorize the city attorney's office to proceed with developing a condo agreement and a purchase agreement for sale terms with $750,000 being the purchase price for Center, with, I guess, normal contingencies, sale to close by the end of September of this year.
Mr. Swanson, any comments? Mr. Chairman, members of the JDA, late this afternoon, I had a chance to speak with John Workup, I think he's been advising the JDA. We have some concerns with the recommendation that came out of the committee at this time. We would like to ask that the JDA table this until April 15th, if we can do it before then, we'd bring back April 1st. The effort of making a condo out of this building, from a legal perspective, is very, very substantial, and there are some policy questions that need to be addressed as to the governance of the building under the condominium, as well as the maintenance. Those issues have not been discussed at all. We would like to have the opportunity to confer either with Center or Center's legal counsel, to make sure that they are agreeable to our concepts on the management and the governance under the condo agreement, before we get to the point of acting upon the condominium agreement or the purchase agreement, because it may have an effect on their position on both. We'd like to know that upfront, as opposed to after the fact. So, we're not questioning the valuation of the building, or the process, or anything, but we think we just need to nail down those details before we take the next step. So, we would ask that it be tabled.
Our motion.
We have a motion from Mayor Brown. Second from Ms. Mock. Any further comments or discussion?
I ask it to be tabled to April 15th, if we can bring it back early, I'll bring it back on the 1st.
Very good. So, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, this matter will be tabled.
Thank you.
And item 2.6, Revised Purchase Offer for Business Park Land from Border States Electric, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you. The map that's attached with the staff report shows the new proposed location and amount of property that we are working with Border States on. I think last month, we had eight acres that we were working with, they've gone to refinement of their site plan and the size of the building that they were working with, and they're actually able to get by with 7.04 acres. In addition, that reduced the right-of-first refusal lot to 3.95. It left the remaining lot a little bit larger, about two acres larger, so overall, we're just recommending approval on this, and overall, we do have sellable lots that are marketable, and we can sell as well, so overall, it's just an update, and we recommend approval.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Brooks. Any comments or discussion?
Move approval?
Very good, we have a motion from Mr. Weigl, second from Ms. Marshall, Mr. Swanson.
Just for an update, we have exchanged draft purchase agreements with legal counsel for Border States, that was put on hold pending this decision as to the square footage, but we have made significant progress on that.
Very good, thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion approved. Very good, that concludes our agenda, looking for a motion to adjourn. Mayor Brown, seconded by Mr. Vian, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thanks.
The City of Grand Forks proud home of the University of North Dakota City Council meeting Monday, March 18th, 2019, is hereby called to order. Welcome and roll, call.
Weigl.
Here.
Dockler.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Sandy and Vian.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Under 1.2 Mayor's announcements tonight, congratulations to the Thompson Thommies, state Class B champions. We're proud of you and proud to be your regional friends, neighbors, and supporters. Also, congratulations and thank you to the organizers of the First Probotics Grand Regional Competition at the Alaris this weekend, and that was fun, these kids are amazing, with over 1,000 top high school students in the region and from as far away as China showcasing their science and tech skills here in Grand Forks, it was inspiring. Of course, the CVB and the Alaris were incomparable hosts, so thanks to them, and to the organizers of the event that were here, it was simply amazing. And this event will be at the Alaris for several more years, and it's an incredible opportunity to continue to not only provide STEM events for our young people, but showcase our city, UND, and our region as a hotbed of technology research, development, and commercialization. So, next we go to item 2, Awards, Presentations, Appointments, and Proclamations, 2.1.
Proclamation, Neuromyelitis Optica Awareness Month for March 2019.
Whereas neuromyelitis opticus spectrum disorder, more commonly known as NMO, is a life-threatening and autoimmune disease of the central nervous system, individuals with NMO develop optic neuritis, which causes pain in the eyes, as well as vision loss, and transverse myelitis, leading to weakness, numbness, and sometimes paralysis to the arms and legs, along with many other life-altering side effects. In the course of the disease, immune stem cells and antibodies attack and destroy myelin cells in the optic nerve and the spinal cord. NMO has been considered to be a severe variant of multiple sclerosis, however, ongoing research suggests that NMO is a separate disease from MS. Finding a cure for NMO has the potential to help other autoimmune diseases such as multiple sclerosis, lupus, and many others. The Guthie-Jackson Charitable Foundation is organizing March as the annual awareness month for NMO in perpetuity, and the Guthie-Jackson Charitable Foundation, along with patients, caregivers, scientists, and clinicians, will participate in this observance. Now, therefore, as the Mayor of Grand Forks, I do hereby proclaim March 2019 as the NMO Awareness Month in the City of Grand Forks. Next, we go to item 2.2.
Employee Recognition.
The month of February, we want to thank Barry Arns for 35 years with water maintenance, Tammy Woodstrom, 30 years with engineering, Troy Vanio, 25 years with the police, Justin Holweger, 10 years with the police department, Marcus Lee, five years with public health, and in March, we'd like to thank Richard Wankles, 40 years with wastewater, Eric Nelson, 15 years with mosquito control, Cheryl Sinmione, 15 years with public information, Chris Brown, 10 years with the police department, Chris Aiken, 10 years with inspections, and Bobby Newland, five years with wastewater. Let's give them a hand, thank you. Item 2.3.
Legislative Update.
Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. First of all, I'd like to report on the Mayor's delegation to the National League of Cities in Washington, DC last week, and our visits to our congressional delegation. The team members attended workshops on opioids and substance use disorder, the evolving guidelines for President Trump's opportunity zones, budgeting, civil discourse, new policy approaches to housing, and a workshop on ethical leadership. Team members also attended the following National League of City Committees, Transportation and Infrastructure, University Communities, UAS Innovation, Military Communities, and Economic Development. One thing that I'd like to focus on is a summary of the economic overview for cities in the coming years, as discussed by the National League of Cities leadership. Just a quick list of bullets here, the federal shutdown had the greatest and most immediate impact on vulnerable and disadvantaged populations, including the elderly on fixed incomes. There will be likely continued decreased revenue streams for most cities around the country, both in terms of property and sales tax revenue. The issue with retail sales is a national one, and this will also be especially pronounced in relation to ongoing increases in expenses for community needs. In addition to decreasing revenue at the local level, we can anticipate continued cuts in terms of federal funding, some, not all great news here. The full impact of the 2018 tax cuts are still not known, but it seems increasingly clear that most American families will be receiving smaller tax refunds, which often provide important capital for once-a-year purchases. There is an anticipated growth in both personal and municipal debt across the country. We are most fortunate here in Grand Forks to have healthy reserves and a very high bond rating, thanks to our finance department and the Mayor's budgeting process. And finally, the President's budget requests additional cuts to domestic spending, including Medicare and social services. The bottom line here is that cities are going to have to continue to try to do more with less. Beyond the National League of Cities Conference, we were received by each of our three congresspeople and their staff, and enjoyed engaging discussions. Our group included the President of the North Dakota League of Cities and a city commissioner from Williston. Our collaborative efforts with other cities across the state shared unique, yet common priorities, and helped to provide a common front and common support to our delegation while continuing to strengthen important intercity relations in the state. After congratulating Representative Armstrong and Senator Kramer on their elections, our discussions mainly focused on the need for federal funding for infrastructure, including both surface transportation and water. We also discussed opioid and mental health issues, workforce development, the Grand Forks Air Force Base, and UAS, and for community action and affordable housing, and the need to recognize the importance of our 911 operators and their role as first responders. We also had important discussions with each of them about the evolving guidelines of the Trump administration's opportunity zones, which is a federal tool to attract investment in designated parts of our city. Grand Forks was awarded three of these opportunity zones by Governor Burgum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you for that update, and thank you for your participation. So, I serve on the NLC Transportation Infrastructure and Services Committee, and our briefing was on the status of the reauthorization of the Surface Transportation Bill and on possible infrastructure funding packages that are now moving through Congress. And the priority coming out of our committee and out of the National League of Cities is infrastructure, with a focus on mobility, congestion, and saving lives. We discussed the reauthorization of the Transportation Bill, or the Highway Bill, the last one was called the FAST Act, and the current reauthorization is similarly moving fast. In fact, there's some thought Congress would like to reauthorize the bill before entering the campaign season this fall, perhaps looking at a bill as early as this summer, and that's why engaging and communicating our priorities now is so important. Senator Kramer is in a key position on the Environmental and Public Works Committee, which has jurisdiction over the next Surface Transportation Reauthorization Bill, and he's already reached out to ask our thoughts about how to move forward. We also had a very discussion on this personally in his office last week. We continue to push national formulas that make sense to North Dakota, grant programs where cities like Grand Forks have a chance to secure funding, and continue deregulation that makes projects go further and are more cost-effective. And making sure the Highway Trust Fund is solvent is the key issue, and there were lengthy discussions on revenue options, from raised gas tax, which hasn't been raised since 1993, or vehicle miles tax to toll roads. Of course, toll roads don't work in North Dakota, but there's not much appetite for the alternatives, so expect this discussion to continue. And our committee also discussed the possibility of an infrastructure package along the lines of what President Trump proposed last year. And there's a chance that this type of funding package could move forward simultaneously with the Transportation Reauthorization Bill, but as we were told numerous times, it's early in the discussion. We've also made sure the committee's staff and the NLC are supporting my application for membership on the FAA Drone Advisory Task Course, and we hope to hear word on that application in the next month. Mr. Vian?
I'm going to add just a couple of things to the comments that Mr. Weber and the Mayor just talked about. One of the sessions I was able to attend was the Community and Economic Development for Urban Plan for Electoral Officials, which was a day-long simulation put on by the Urban Land Institute, focusing a lot on public-private partnerships and the simulation on fundamental forces that affect urban development. The other thing that is going to follow up, I think, is going to be the opportunity zones, we've had some discussion on that, we've really not got into how they might benefit us, and I think now that we have a better understanding of what that might be, we put together a game plan that'll be coming back to us about how we might pursue that opportunity through the opportunity zones. So, that's kind of just the things that I was going to add to the trip to Washington. Then, I might just transition into the legislative update. Last Friday, we met with the League of Cities, there was 18 bills that they brought forward that they're still tracking, and many of them are still ones that we're following up. I'm going to report out on a couple of those. House Bill 1066, which is known as the Prairie Dog Bill, the Senate last week unanimously approved that, that's on the way to the governor's desk for his signature. That's a very significant benefit for us for infrastructure funding for the future. So, that was a good thing to hear. Another one that's still in process is House Bill 1227, the Residential License Fee, and it was Dockler had been interested in that, that did get a do-not-pass out of committee, so that will be still going on, so that was successful for us. The other one was, I was going to say, is House Bill 1435, that's on the state interoperable radio network. That seemed to have good momentum to be moving forward, so that was good news to hear. Senate Bill 2275, having to do with the legacy fund earmarks, seems to be having problems, that's critical, that was going to be low-interest loans for us, we had 15 million, I think, out of the last session, they were going to update, or up that to 25 million, and then, that would have been the local match for the water supply project. So, that one we're following, continuing to follow closely to. Senate Bill 2304, having to do with city fines on moving violation, did pass out of the House with some limits, though, to two times what's currently allowed. the House with some limits to two times what's currently allowed by state. And 2220 would have the funding in it for the Grand Forks Water Treatment Plan and the state chair of the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, and that is moving slowly through the House at this point in time. So that's my.
Thank you for that update. Next, we go to item 2.4.
Flood Action Plan Update.
Mr. Grasser, welcome.
Evening, Mayor Brown, members of City Council. It's that time of year again where normally we'll do a bit of an update on a flood. Some years, it's pretty brief. This year, we do have something to talk about. We've had no news to anybody here. We've had a wet and cold February, which has kind of changed, given us some discussion points. So, John, if we can flip to the next one. This is the latest flood forecast we got from the National Weather Service. It just came out on Friday. So it takes into account both of the last larger storm events that we've had. It factors in anticipated weather than normal conditions and things like that, as they're projecting out on their outlooks. So for Grand Forks, generally what people target on is about that 50 percentile mark. 50% chance of exceedance is the way they characterize it. You can see, we're pretty much going to have a large flood. The lowest percentages in here, most likely, still gets us at almost 46 feet. But the target range right now that generally people plan for is about 50%, and that's 50.6 feet. We also look ahead for contingencies. We don't want to be caught by surprise on a flood, so we also look ahead at what some of these other events are. You can see some of these out here on the tail end, the 10%, 5%. Get us pretty close to what the 1997 event was at 54.6. Maybe any questions on that? This is a Weather Service product. Okay. John, next slide, please. Just to review, again, where we're at with our flood protection project, this is a map of our general overview of the flood protection system. It's not meant to be able to be read. I'm just trying to give you a general overview of the protection. It's made up of a series of levees and flood walls basically along the river. That's what that red line is there. And then on the south end, there's a tieback. They call it a tieback in here. It keeps the river from coming around behind you when it starts to overland flood. And that tieback is on Merrifield Road, just in case, you know, for a point of reference. This is Belmont Road down in here. Also, part of the, key part of the plan in green here is the diversion channel. What that does is intercepts the overland flow that otherwise would end up into the English Cooley Drainage Basin, and that has definitely given the cities problems in the past with that overland flow. So this will intercept that flow and basically divert it around the city to be safely discharged back into the Red River. Some flood protection factoids here, I guess. Our levee heights generally referred to as 60 feet. When we built the flood project, we did, using local dollars, did do an enhancement to the flood wall heights. We did add an extra three feet on the flood walls. That gives us the ability to actually go back and add some clay on top of the levees should we need to do that. Gives us an extra level of protection. For reference, the 1997 flood was 54.4 feet, plus or minus, and this reference in here, 97 flood contained, what that is, is if the water, under our current flood alignments, if the water had been contained within those boundaries, the height would have been 57 feet. That's just how they calculate the flows. Because the flows broke out in 97, the height didn't get as high as it would if it were Another couple of points that aren't up there, just point of references for folks on elevations. Generally speaking, you'll start to see impacts in Grand Forks. Some of the lower-level trails in the greenways start to get wet at about 34 to 35 feet. One of the first pump stations we activate is down in the Lincoln area down here. That's at about 36 feet. The public doesn't see that. That's all done by Public Works. Basically, they close the gate, turn the pump station on so that river water can't get back into the city, but drainage that's going on from in-town can get out. Basically, you pump it, put it into the river. And there's this whole series of, there's a dozen pump stations. Again, just kind of the first one initialized at about 36 feet. Refer, there's references oftentimes here, talk about stoplogs. Those are basically these, the beams that you put in, like on a road. Some may remember on DeMers Avenue is a very visible spot where you stack the aluminum beams up, and that's, we call it stoplogs. And that's basically to do a closure and an opening where we have a roadway. One of the lowest first stoplogs that we put in is down in Riverside at about 42 and a half feet. Minnesota Point Bridge and the DeMers Bridge both end up being closed by stoplogs at about 45 and a half. I'm using approximations because when we get into the flood fight, depending upon what the river is doing, we may start things either a little earlier or sometimes a little later than, you know, some of these normal trigger points. Having said that, too, again, because these things are a bit labor-intensive, the Public Works folks will go out ahead of time, most likely, and shut down some of the more recreational features. For instance, there's a series of small openings in the greenways to get into the greenway trails. A lot of times, they'll go in and they'll close those up early again, so they're done, they can move on and focus, because we want to do things like DeMers Avenue as late in the process as we safely can to keep that commerce open. And the last bridge that we have connecting Minnesota to North Dakota is Highway 2, and that's at about 52 feet. Okay, John? We did go through, have a kickoff meeting last Friday with generally our smaller group staff and some of our most immediately impacted partners. So we met Friday and did some reports on that. Public Works has already started prepping the flood stations. To get to the bottom of these stations, there are actually, a lot of times, there's ice in the bottom of them from flows that are occurring over the wintertime that freeze up as they get to the outlet. So we call it, we refer to that as cutting ice, and they've been cutting ice in various stations, getting ready for the, to be able to shut the gates. Some of the procedural things that we talked about doing, that we should do here soon, in my opinion, I think we'll do here fairly quickly, probably early next week would be my guess, declare flood, declare an emergency. And what that does is allows us, that's a trigger point, that allows us to start accessing and triggering FEMA and state resources and things like that and potential reimbursements. When we did have some of the FEMA officials at our flood fight meeting, they inferred anyway that there, any disaster declaration that comes this spring may be backdated to be able to catch some of the snow events. So potentially, some of the overtime and things that have gone on in some of the snow clearing recently. I think, I believe Fargo's already declared an emergency. I can't speak to the county, but I think they're going to consider that here this week. Again, it's more of a process. I like to get some more procedural things out of the way done. There's a bureaucratic process that works behind the scene with the state and the feds and permits and different things like that. So I would anticipate that the mayor will probably make that declaration here within a week. And we also did have a discussion that we should talk, we're planning on having a meeting and inviting the Shady Ridge neighborhood folks, and that will be a Ward 5 issue. We haven't set a date on that yet, but we're looking at next week. Shady Ridge, the reference there, that there's development on the wet side of the levee. And so we want to have a discussion with the residents over there and talk about, you know, what to expect. What do we have, you know, for low points? The homes are generally fairly high, but the street can't be as high up as all the homes were. So, you know, you'll start to see earliest signs of flooding in that area will be starting to, you know, water, water in the streets, things like that. But again, there's, we just want to talk with the neighborhood and make sure that they're aware of what their options are and what their impacts might be. It was quite a discussion a few years back relative to annexing and out there. And so it is one of the few areas that we have on the wet side that's in the city limits. So going back to the, going back to the meeting, some of the early things we did administratively is we talked about flood assignments, the FEMA and those, the government agencies like to operate on an incident command system. And I'm an engineer, so I can't hardly even spell it, but we try to operate in general on the incident command system. And with that, part of that is we lay out some of the flood assignments. So you can see in here, we're partnering with the county and other folks. The operation of the EOC, Kari Getz, our EOC director, will be running that. We do have two people in the UAS category because we have, we're going to have military assets, we're going to have civilian assets, and so we're kind of dividing that up. Gary Lorenz, our fire chief, would probably be doing any coordination on the civilian side, and Mark Nelson would be doing the military contacts. Technical support, Mark Walker out of Engineering. Sandbagging and county coordination would be through the EOC. Again, we did award a contractors, award a contract last week for flood fighting contractors. If and when we engage them, we'll have Shane Dukesher from Engineering coordinating some of that, and then some of the other engineering coordination will be through Dave Karinko. Last slide, please. Then there'll probably become a point where we need to have volunteers, again, if that comes up, and that'll be coordinated again through the EOC. So Kari's going to have a whole lot of subtitles underneath the EOC. I'm only catching the highlights. And public information, of course, we do use our Information Center for receiving calls and issuing news releases, things like that. We did talk about the Shady Ridge on the wet side, and there's the wet side, and then there's what I refer to as the wet wet side. The wet side is the wet side of the levee. The wet wet side are those on the wet side of the levee, plus they're on the other side of East Lake, which turns into its own river at some point in time. And so in particular interest there will be emergency services being able to service anybody that's in that location, because there is relatively fast water in there that you have to cross to get to that point. And Fire Chief Lorenz will also be working on that. Finance, at some point, we're going to get reimbursement, and it comes down to the money. Emily Fosson will be working on that. And our actual incident commander will be Todd Fealan. So he will be the actual top name on the list of the Incident Command Center. That's all I have, Mayor, and unless there's questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Any questions for Mr. Grasser? Mr. Vian.
Mr. Grasser, do you see that we're going to have, how is the English Cooley? Past year, sometime, that's been full of snow, and we've had to dig that snow out. Do you see any need to have to do that this year to get it into the diversion to go around?
At this point, the short answer is no. The ditch isn't quite as full as it has been in the past, and so we're not seeing that right now. We have done, we've worked with the county on times on digging out Drain 9 and Drain 4 and some of those when the snow was basically the, you know, completely leveled at the top. I'm not sure that we've ever really done much of that since 97. We will dig out, we being primarily the street department, will do some digging out of some of the smaller ditches and things, sometimes along 32nd Avenue South, sometimes, you know, DeMers Avenue and 55th Street and some of those, some of those areas where they're more local, those are sometimes full. And so we may do some preliminary digging of that, but not, I'm not really envisioning anything on the English Cooley specifically.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Grasser? Ms. Mark.
Are we going to have updates going forward so as people get progressively more worried or if we get more snow or anything like that, are we going to keep updating people?
Absolutely. We can do this either on a weekly or biweekly basis. I get whatever, you know, there's probably, you're not going to see a ton of activity or things really happening probably during the next two weeks. This week, I'm going to characterize a couple of things. One is in Grand Forks, and one is maybe at the headwaters. But generally speaking, this week, we're going to, you know, the mother nature will be kind of ripening the snowpack and getting it ready to melt. And then probably the following week, again, depending if the temperature trends tend to stay the way they're looking right now, that's when we'll start seeing overland water moving. I think there's going to be a little more challenge in the county. We've had more snow out in our county area than we've had in the last couple of years. And so the flood after that will probably be, you know, a couple, at least a couple of weeks after that. But that isn't to say you're not going to see water in the street, that kind of stuff, because that'll happen. That'll happen probably this week from, you know, frozen catch basins and things like that. But that's, is as much of a pain as that is. It's not, that's not a flood situation per se.
How often does the Weather Service update their forecasts?
We just got some communication. They're going to do, I don't think they're going to do an actual updated forecast. If the melt starts to occur the way I'm describing, I'm not sure that we'll actually get another one. However, they will give us some situational updates, I think, on Mondays and Thursdays. They basically will tell us what's happening out there in the system. Generally, you'll start to see water move on the southern end of the system, the, you know, Wapperton areas first. And, you know, it takes a while for that water to translate back up here.
Okay. Thank you for that update. It's good to see we have a plan.
Yes.
And then item 3, public hearings and second readings of ordinances, 3.1.
Public hearing for the 2018 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
So we open the public hearing on 3.1. We close the public hearing on 3.1. Counsel comments on 3.1, Mr. Vian.
Move, bro.
Mr. Weigle, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries, thank you, 3.2.
Public hearing and second reading ordinance to amend the zoning map to rezone and exclude from the Columbia Park West PUD Concept Development Plan Amendment Number 5, and to include within the Columbia Park West PUD Concept Development Plan Amendment Number 6, Lot 3, Block 1, Opportunity Park, first re-subdivision, which is located at South 42nd and 3670 South.
Open the public hearing on 3.2. I'll close the public hearing on 3.2. Counsel action on 3.2. Mr. Weber, motions. Ms. Marshall, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries, thank you. Item 4, action items. Who would like action items pulled for discussion? I'll pull 4.14. Any other action items to be pulled, Ms. Marshall?
4.1.
4.1, Ms. Marshall. Any other action items to be pulled for discussion? If not, that leaves 4.2, Mr. Swanson. If not, that leaves 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, 4.11, 4.12, 4.13, and 4.15 for a vote. Ms. Marshall, motions then. And Mr. Vian, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. And then we go to action item 4.1.
Preliminary approval of an ordinance amending Section 9-04041, Article 4 of the Grand Forks City Code relating to gaming.
Ms. Marshall.
Yes, I would just like to be recused from this item.
Okay. Ms. Mark, motions, you're recused. Mr. Weber, seconds, you're recused. All in favor recusing, Ms. Marshall, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ms. Marshall, you're recused. Now we need a motion and a second on 4.1. Ms. Mark, motions. Mr. Weber, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries, thank you. 4.2.
Preliminary approval of an ordinance amending Section 21-0205 of the Grand Forks City Code relating to domestic distillery.
Mr. Swanson.
Mayor Brown, members of council, I wanted to raise a question because I'm looking for some guidance from the council. In this draft ordinance, we have given the licensee the authority to have complimentary samples of no more than one fluid ounce, which is consistent with all of our samples. However, I suggested a maximum of no more than six fluid ounces. We had some discussion in my office as to what impact six fluid ounces of a spirits would be in light of the alcohol content compared to beer and wine. And I just want to raise the issue to you that we have some concern that perhaps I've made that too large. I don't have a suggestion for you. Perhaps we can look at that at final approval, but I wanted to raise that point to you. I have no concern with the one fluid ounce per item, but perhaps the overall cap, we should look at something other than six fluid ounces. I will tell you, for wine and beer, it is one fluid ounce per serving and no more than eight fluid ounces total. But there is a substantial difference in alcohol content between spirits and wine and beer. So just for your consideration, perhaps we'll address that at the final reading.
Thank you. So I guess we need a motion and a second. Mr. Weigle, motions. Second. Ms. Dockler, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Weber dissenting, motion carries. Next we go to, is it 4.14?
Preliminary approval of an ordinance to dedicate right-of-way on the Flat of Shanahan First Edition located on 2900 Block of 62nd Avenue Southwest of Columbia Road.
Mr. Gangler.
Good evening, Mayor Brown, members of the council. If you'd give me a second to get set up here. Okay, I'm gonna walk through a few details related to this agenda item, which is a plat that's associated with a proposed new MinnCota substation, which is a combined effort of MinnCota and NODAC. So to give you just a little site description, 62nd Avenue South, which is the east-west route south of the golf course and then Columbia Road, so the white box that we're seeing here is the general location of this proposed substation, which did go through the Planning and Zoning Commission, was granted preliminary approval. Staff will be doing some notices based on the direction of the commission to some of the surrounding property owners, informing them of the next steps for the final hearing. To give you some zoning information, this is our year 2045 land use plan, so where the proposed substation is located is in the general vicinity of where the city is seeing and will continue to see potential residential growth south of, kind of, the target area. This is our tier map, so the darker shade of orange is our Tier One, which is the area that we are anticipating for our future growth accommodations up to the year 2045, so obviously this area is being set now for further anticipated growth. We do have individuals from MinnCota and NODAC that will give you a sort of an overview presentation of who they are, what they're doing, and why there's a need for an additional substation. On a technical note, on the plat, this drawing depicts the proposed plat area, which is in dark, the black line. The hash lines are access control lines. So approval of this replat would acknowledge a variance to how we have our driveway spacings in code for arterial roadways. I've highlighted three driveways, two of which would be located on the property itself. The third driveway, which is just to the east, would be for future access to this property adjacent to this plat at such time in the future where it does develop. Staff is recommending that we locate and allow a driveway for this, right now, this unplatted parcel, just to avoid any future conflicts with requests to locate a driveway any closer to the main intersection, ultimately 62nd Avenue and Columbia someday will be a, probably a heavily used intersection, so we wanna be able to back off any driveways within that reasonable area to allow for turning lanes and those types of things. And then the two driveways that are being requested, I noted 660 feet from center line of Columbia, that's the general distance that we would normally have driveway or street spacings. In this case, as the applicants will explain, in terms of the use of the property, very minimal vehicle traffic, an occasional service vehicle, I would assume, from time to time. So staff's really not anticipating that these additional driveways are gonna pose any issues opposed to driveways that might be located for a heavier commercial use or heavier residential use. So that's sort of the nutshell of the plat, what's being proposed, and at this point, I would like to turn it over to the representatives from MinnCota and NODAC to talk about their development more specifically.
Good evening, Mayor Brown and the city council. My name is Brian Hoffer. I'm the property and right-of-way manager for MinnCota Power. We've got Jay Bushy, he's the project engineer for MinnCota Power, and Steve, Steve Brightenbach from NODAC Electric, he's the engineering manager for NODAC. So click on through here. We just want a little video here, just kinda explain MinnCota. MinnCota's been in Grand Forks for, since 1940, but we just wanted to show you this.
In the north, we know power. The power of hard work. The power of resilience through innovation. The power of community. MinnCota Power Cooperative has harnessed that energy since 1940, supporting the families, farms, schools, and businesses of eastern North Dakota and northwestern Minnesota. MinnCota generates and transmits electricity to 11 distribution cooperatives around the region. Our power portfolio is diverse and homegrown, with electricity born from North Dakota's lignite coalfields of the west, the winds of the prairie, and the currents of the mighty Missouri. Our current travels through 3,400 miles of transmission lines and 250 electrical substations, which in turn energizes the lives of more than 150,000 consumers. But MinnCota's true power is its people, the consumers, cooperatives, and employees who have a voice in how the electricity flows from creation to community. MinnCota's members actively guide the future of the company. As a not-for-profit electric cooperative, MinnCota isn't here to make more. We're here to do more, to serve better, and to enhance lives. Although this cooperative's heart is on the farm, its eye is on the future. The future of efficiency, of technology, of security, and of the people who can help make an impact on the industry. MinnCota's team is vast and varied, on the line to create reliable power for evolving neighborhoods, imagining the innovative systems to make it work, and pulling the currents together as one. One team, one community, one goal: power. MinnCota, our power is our people.
Just a, just kinda to recap about MinnCota. MinnCota's a wholesale electric generation and transmission company, which means we generate the power in North Dakota and we transmit into eastern North Dakota and northwest Minnesota, and all the kinda down to the Detroit Lakes area. We were formed in the 1940s. We've got 11 co-op members, so MinnCota's a co-op, we're made of nonprofit and 11 co-op members. NODAC is one of those members that owns MinnCota. And basically, MinnCota, you know, NODAC comes to MinnCota and says, hey, we need more power in a certain area, so we transmit the power to NODAC, and then NODAC sells it to the consumers. We serve about 35,000 square miles, and we have 400 employees, 200 of them here in Grand Forks, and about 200 out at the center plant. We just recently built a new headquarters out on 32nd, west of the interstate. We're very proud of that facility, and it works great. It's a little bit better upgrade than on Mill Road there, so, like I mentioned there, we're a co-op, we're a nonprofit co-op, and we try to, you know, do a reliable electricity and keep the cost down for our consumers. At the end of the day, they pay our bills, so. The 11 members are listed there, once again, NODAC. Right now, this project is for NODAC Electric. Generation Resources, to kinda recap some of those, we've got several coal mine shafts out at center, and we also have wind power at Langdon and down by Valley City and at an Infinity Project. And we also do get some electricity from WAPA and the Garrison Diverge out there. This is our Milton Young Plant out at center, very big plant. I think we give tours if you're interested in that, so, actually, the cranes and the overburden dig and the coalup is quite a, quite a sight. We have over 3,300 miles of transmission line. This line was just built 2012 to about 2016. We built it from Standard to Grand Forks. This is one of the major transmission line, it's called the 345 KV line that's shown on the screen there. So that's just a recent build by MinnCota. And this one actually does come into the Grand Forks out by, just south of the water treatment plant, the new plant out there, that's where it terminates. Substation, this is kinda where, why we're here tonight. We transmit electricity to different substation sites, and this is one, this one will be for NODAC Electric. Why the need in the substation for this area? You know, it's the expansion of Grand Forks in the southern area there. Right now, I think they're limited on how much power they can provide, and Steve can give a little bit better insight on that. Just NODAC requires additional power to service members' need for that, that growth in that The proposed location, the proposed location right now is within about 500 feet of a 69 KV line at the intersection of Columbia Road and 62nd Street there, so what that means there, it minimizes the length of new transmission line to about 400 feet. And then also, it's proximity to NODAC Electric's infrastructure, which I think is a little bit further north by King's Walk's entrance.
It's right in the corner, it's...
Oh, you're right in the corner, so, they're about 500 feet away also. And the big one that I would like to put first, but the current landowner's willing to sell his property in that area. This is just an overview of the substation site, kinda what Brad had shown earlier. This is the area that's served by NODAC, by this proposed substation. Basically, it goes over to Washington Street, down, what street is that?
Forty-seventh.
Forty-seventh, and then all the way around back up to 32nd Avenue to the interstate and halfway to Merrifield Road down there. We haven't, we didn't have this at our last meeting, but, you know, we will be doing a screening plan to try to blend it in a little bit better. There is some trees on the west-east side of the proposed property right now, Guy Usolitera owns that. And so right now, this is just a preliminary screening plan that still needs to be reviewed by Brad Gangler and the engineering group. It's something we put together that, you know, we wanna work with the community and just kinda make it blend in a little bit better. One thing we, you know, we did in Fargo, it's called our veteran sub, is we did a different fence, instead of just chain link fence, we kinda dressed it up a little bit with this black mesh fence, it's kind of a coated fence, black. We can still see into our substation for security reasons, we still need to see into them to see if there's anybody in there, but this kinda blends in blacks a little bit better. Any questions?
Do we have any questions?
Time frame, we're looking to start construction in like mid-August to mid-September, and construct and basically energize in like June of 2020.
I saw you have Pearson Dam in the WAPA, so do you manage all of WAPA power or just that part that comes this far east?
We just purchase a portion of them that we get allotted for. It's not a lot, but we do get allotted some of it that comes...
The WAPA line that comes into Gump.
Correct, yep, yep. I'm not sure of the certain percentages, but we get a certain allotment.
WAPA allocates their own percentages out, and it's predetermined how much goes where.
And your existing substation west of town, is that the NODAC or is that MinnCota?
The two bigger ones, south of the water plant, the new water plant, there's one of them's are straight south of the water treatment plant that's MinnCota's, and across the railroad track to the east is actually Excels. And then we, we have a smaller one that's kinda south of L&amp;M, and that's what'd be kinda what this one would be, is a smaller one, south of L&amp;M.
South of Bosom Substation.
Oh, one other question, the screening that you talked about, is that the type of fence that you just described or just showed us?
Yeah, that's what we'd wanna use in this case. Typically, we, in a rural setting, most of our substation are rural, we use just a regular chain link fence, and this one, we kinda wanna screen and dress it up a little bit more.
Any further questions from council? Mr. Weigl, move through. Do we have seconds? Ms. Mark, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, carries.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Next, we go to item five, the rest of items, 4.1. And item six, we have a situation request, I have a, I have a settlement through the municipal bill, 7.41. Any motion and second to the bill? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, carries, second, 7.41. Any corrections and changes? Now, a good motion, Mr. Reverend Morse, Mr. Scott, second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, carries, second. Kate Sues, you're a candidate, Congress, you have a lot to fight, I've been back. Nine, Mayor and Councilman, Congress. Councilman Weigl.
I've been there.
Mr. Scott, Congress. Councilman Weber.
I just zoomed, my turn.
No, I'm sitting on the chair. Thank you. And then Mr. Mark. Council vice president. Again, I would like to thank Gary Arns, Kelly Woodston, Troy Manuel, Justin Holter, Chris Lee, Richard Whitwell, Eric Lawson, Sheryl Simeoni, Chris Bryan, Chris Jenkins, and Bobby Unit, they're a service of the city. Again, congratulations to the adoption Thomas, getting class three champions. And a big congratulations to the ten members involved in the first of honors in their grand regional competition here at Alaris this weekend. Next, I represent the chairman, Mr. Washington, Mr. Vian, Washington, just wants to be second, all in favor. There, say aye. Aye. Hold, stand, adjourn, thank you.
Thank you for being with us tonight. This meeting has been brought to you in part by In Competition. There are many variables to overcome. Your competitors, your confidence, the terrain, and the unexpected. April 13th, all of these factors will come into play when the Hugo's toughest monster truck tour championship weekend returns to Alaris Center. With reigning tour champion, who in last year's championship narrowly defeated Quad Chaos, who is back and looking for redemption, and others who are looking to take them down, who will prevail? Find out April 13th, the Hugo's toughest monster truck tour championship weekend, Alaris Center.
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.
How many things in your house connect to the internet? Let's see, computers, smartphones, gaming console, maybe your appliances in lights. They say that by the year 2020, the average home will have five devices for every one person. I don't know about you guys, but I don't wanna be average. We're going to need much better internet.
Midco Extreme Gig is here, life-changing.
Know what's in this box? Well, in case your crystal ball is broken, here's a hint. Safe, reliable energy, for starters, but there's also a commitment to this community. See, at Excel Energy, this is our hometown, so we're not just about making a living here, we're about living here. Aw, I wish I had wings. In our community, we're always delivering. Excel Energy, responsible by nature. As a farm kid from North Dakota, I was raised to face challenges head-on. But that was put to the test when I was diagnosed with cancer as a teenager. Now, I'm determined to help kids overcome illnesses like I did. So I started my journey at the University of North Dakota. With hard work and determination, I'll help others like my doctors helped me. I'm making my impact, how will you make yours?